Okay, I'd like to call through order the school committee meeting of September 20th. You have before you an agenda. Can I have a motion to approve?
Some move.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Comments from the public? Saying none. We'll move on to the superintendent's report.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. I would like to start with a brief update on our beautiful new baseball fields and tennis courts, which are almost eighty-five percent completed, according to Diane O'Neil, who couldn't make it this evening. You'll see, we have a little diagram here and we have up on the screen the plan, and it is pretty much exactly the way we wanted it to be. So, we have five tennis courts, and this is over on the Bacchus Lane side of the campus. Our baseball field is in great shape. The tennis courts will be sealed sometime this fall. We're waiting for the folks to seal our courts. That will allow for enough time for curing so that there could possibly be spring play, which would be very exciting. Finishing touches such as benches and other seating will be put in once the courts are sealed and cured. The security cameras, which are very important to this part of the complex, will be installed next week or the week after, and we have locked gates that are only opened by key card access. So, we'll make sure that our new, nice new courts and field are in good shape. The baseball field has been sodded and the fencing has been put up, but the field cannot be used at all until the coming spring, so we're trying very hard to keep people off of the fields. Diane wants to invite all of you for a tour, so perhaps we could set that up sometime in the coming weeks. We'd love to have you see the work that's been happening at that time. So, I'm happy to take any questions you might have around this. I will do my best, but I don't have the nitty gritty on exactly what materials are being used and such, but certainly I can get those to Diane and then get them back to you. But they look beautiful. I did a tour not long ago, and it's just really nice. So, I think it's a great improvement. So, very exciting.
I have a question to the chair. Is that three forty-five dead center? Three fifteen down the left field line, right field line?
Oh, gosh. You're asking the wrong person.
I'm just curious. I can't read it on this. Now, left field. You see where the left field is? If someone's hit a home run, that goes right into the NIS playground.
No, there is a very tall fence, which is retractable as well, but it will probably... Yes, 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 yes.
Thank you.
Yep. Good question, though.
The tennis courts, for example, in the summer, will that be public availability?
Yes. It will. We will. I'm working with the community school to determine how that's going to look. We have to make sure that we have a good plan in place because we want to make sure that they're not just readily open, that we have a system in place that the public can use through the community school, which will have a tennis program set up, as they did with the Jetty's tennis courts. No questions? Great, I'll continue. So, staffing. Since our last meeting, we have had a few ups and downs with staff. We had a new, one of our new math hires at the high school resign in the first week, but our staff has really stepped up to take on some additional classes in math and in science. We also do have a long-term sub with a biochemistry degree lined up to cover additional math and science classes, so we're excited about that. We have reposted our positions on School Spring, on Indeed. We're putting them in the local news media. We're doing everything that we can to get the word out that we're still looking. And Town has provided a lot of support posting things on their websites, and there will be a meeting between the communications director for Town, Florencia, and our central office staff in charge of social, future social media tomorrow. So, hopefully we'll have a little bit more information. We have had some luck in improving with our TAs. We have had some hiring with TAs, but we are still looking for ESPs and several other positions, EL Director, et cetera. So, hoping that we can continue to move through the school year and continue hiring every day, every, you know, to fill our positions. So, and I can move on to transportation if there are no questions. So, what's really been keeping me up at night is transportation. Our busing situation has become quite dire. We are down to two bus drivers who are each doing double runs to pick up all of the children who have signed up for bus transportation. I have met with the drivers and with Paul Hilton, who is the executive director of the Cape Cod Collaborative, several times in person and certainly over the phone. And Martin and I have been in touch with Cape Cod Collaborative almost daily to continue adjusting our bus routes, schedules, stops, and pickup times. I know a lot has happened since we lost our third driver, and I thank the work that the Cape Cod Collaborative has been doing to try and make these adjustments. It's been really challenging. Since this afternoon, Cape Cod Collaborative has put out an all-call to other collaboratives in the state and to other districts on the Cape to try and procure some used seven to twelve passenger vans, in which case, if we can find drivers who are willing to go for the seven D license, which is a test, a physical, and eight hours of practicum, we will be able to utilize those vans to transport children. This is still to be determined. We're still waiting to see about used vans and what's available to us, but we will take what we can get. New vans, if we wanted to buy new vans, we're talking eight to nine months right now for that, for those orders to go through. I did inquire about Cape Cod Collaborative reaching out to the National Guard, which he can certainly do, but they only drive vans, so they do not drive big buses. And they are very slow in getting organized and bringing people to the island and then dispatch drivers. So, it can certainly happen, but we may be faster on our own. So, we do have a driver in training, which I've mentioned before, someone who is very possibly going to be ready as early as mid-October, but we need to see how that's going to look. And to be complete, we do need to consider a fourth driver to allow for students to arrive and depart on time from school, to and from school. So, I really do appreciate everyone's support, suggestions, and just wanted to let you know you're welcome to share anything that you think maybe we haven't thought of, but I feel like I've looked at this problem every which way to Sunday, and I just hope that, you know, we can find a solution that will work. But we know that in the near future, we really have to find those additional drivers. So, I'm happy to take any questions that you have and hear what you've heard.
Natalie, from a student's perspective?
I'll think about it.
It's a tough one. I don't have any. I asked you about Nerda before, and I've asked you about, that's the only I can think of. I have nothing, to be honest.
There's none?
No questions.
I mean, none. It's distressing, but, I mean, Paul is the best resource right now of Cape Cod Collaborative, you know, and as we know, we're not the only ones, but we are in the most dire situation. So, I mean, we just need to...
He did mention to me today, I was late because I was on the phone with him, that he would try to find a driver. Possibly he has two staff members who are licensed to drive, so in his office, so he may be able to send them. They've been driving for other communities, but he may be able to send someone if we can find housing for them, at least as a stopgap for a few weeks until we see what happens and how things go. One of the things that is happening currently is the drivers are identifying the exact names and addresses of all the children who are riding. So, getting a real idea of ridership will help because that can also determine times. Is it possible to combine a stop to make it quicker, or is it something that we have to look at carefully, rerouting, or those sorts of things? So, they've been, they've been working hard on that. I know that one of the drivers spent almost four hours with the Cape Cod Collaborative route people today. So, they've been doing everything they can to help. There is one thing that we could certainly look at, and I don't want to, I will bring it up, but I would consider it as the most dire thing, and that would be, do we consider changing the distance regulations that we currently have, which is, we've been picking up students, we've been saying that eligibility is for any student who lives beyond one point five miles away from the schools. We do need to keep that regulation for elementary, but for middle and high school, we could drop that, or say that it would be two miles. So, that's something to consider as a school committee. So, I'll just put that out, and that's something we could bring up to, at our workshop on the 28th, if you'd like. And Paul Hilton did say that if you wanted to have him, he would be willing to come to the workshop on the 28th if you were interested in brainstorming with him.
Working with him, I think it would be a great idea. I think he would offer some valuable insight if you all are on board with that.
Yeah, a hundred percent.
Pauline?
Beth, you just, you mentioned about seven to twelve passenger vans. If that's the case, could we reach out to the Nantucket Inn, or Cranbury Transportation, or Mariah Mitchell? There's a lot of groups that have vans on the island.
They have to be outfitted with educational, there are certain things that the van has to be outfitted with. So, I don't know specifically what those things are. They're safety mechanisms, so we would have to see if those vehicles would even work. We brought that up before, and they've said no. So, the vans themselves...
I wonder if the Boys and Girls Club, because they may have the same, I don't know, probably not, but...
We have spoken with them, and it's, they're different, so we haven't been able to utilize...
Just to interject, Travis reached out to me for our van, for the chicken box van, because we hold sixteen with the teams. And what happens is your insurance becomes the first insurance. So, if anything was to happen, the chicken box would be held liable first. That's why the club couldn't do it. That's just one of the reasons. I was, I mean, I was ready to get up and go. I emailed you, Martin, and then Susan Drag and the back community said, "Okay, sure. You want to be liable? You're the number one on that." That's my question.
If it's not a town-owned vehicle, it's, Rock is absolutely correct. It becomes a insurance, primary insurance is the owner of the vehicle, which in this case is the chicken box, and then secondary insurance could be the town. So, that's a risk. These multi-functional school DVD buses, we just got a quote from, on a used one, from Paul just sent something that's in North Carolina, seventy thousand dollars.
How much?
Seventy thousand dollars.
Thirty-two thousand miles.
That's insane.
Literally, they want us to commit before we've even seen the vehicle.
Oh, my gosh.
Or Cape Cod Collaborative, not us as a district, but true Cape Cod Collaborative. A brand-new one is eighty-five thousand dollars. But they are, as Superintendent Callahan just pointed out, they are safety compliant. There is specific regulations about sturdiness and the safety of the vehicle that transports children, that is a requirement, and we cannot bypass it. So, this is, those vehicles are compliant, and they don't require the big bus driver's license. So, that's an advantage, but again, they are very expensive for a just even. The wait time for a new one is...
Eight to nine, nine months minimum.
I have a question, Beth. If a kid is on the bus and is late to school, does that, is he marked tardy?
We can't, we would never do that. We would never, ever do that. If a bus is arriving late and students are coming ten, fifteen minutes late, absolutely not. No, that is, I understand the anxiety that our children have in this situation, and this is really terrible, and it breaks my heart to think that children are feeling anxious about arriving at school late. But we would never mark them tardy, or never punish them, or make any sort of punitive action towards people arriving late when a bus is not arriving on time. So...
Okay.
Any other questions? No. So, I just had one additional update, and I wanted to congratulate school committee member Esmeralda Martinez, who was recently honored by the Nantucket Civic League as the recipient of the civic salute, which publicly acknowledges extraordinary individuals whose activities have furthered the civic league's broad objectives and bettered the entire island community. So, congratulations to you. Thank you. And that's all.
Okay. Presentations and discussions of issues of interest to the committee. The budget planning calendar.
All right. So, you have the budget planning calendar in your packet, and I will not go through month by month, but this provides a clear timeline of how the budget planning and development will continue. We start as early as today, which is the approval of the budget calendar, and then also the adoption of the budget directives, which are in the second page just after that. So, very simply, this budget is starting now. We will be working on it together. Our plan is to have a little bit more of a transparent style in our budget planning, as opposed to looking at each school and department separately. I mean, we know that we need to do that anyway, but we do need to look on a more district-based level as to what our needs are, so that we can share and problem-solve as a district, as opposed to just individual schools. We do have a lot of staff, and we know that our numbers are shifting with every year a new class coming in. So, we need to be more careful and, you know, have good intention in how we plan our budget, particularly around staff, but also in larger ways as well. So, we hope to do that through discussion with each of our school administrators and also with our district leadership team, because that's really going to be the best way for us to put everything on the table and see how we can best find the budget that is going to work for us. So, you will see that our presentations might be slightly different this year. We may be looking at things in a little bit of a different way. But I think that it is the best way to approach it, so that we know particularly how we can most utilize our budget. I do feel that we have really thoughtful folks working on our budget, all of those out here in the audience who are thinking carefully about what is most needed for our students and most needed for our staff as we continue. So, you will notice that there, on the third page, there are dates that are highlighted. We can certainly discuss this at the end of the meeting, if you wish, around possible changes in dates. As I mentioned in an email to all of you, these dates, but holidays and holiday breaks. So, you might, we might want to change our school committee times and dates to one week later. So, we can certainly have that discussion, and of course, we'll need to reach out to Town and to NCTV to see if that's, those dates are available. But that's why they are in yellow. So...
Any questions?
No questions. Okay. So, I'll share the budget directives as well, which is the page after. This is just an overview of what helps us to drive our budget planning. So, these are things that are important to us as a district, important to us as school and district leaders, and in particular, will help us to design the most appropriate, comprehensive budget for our schools. So, I'll just go through each of the bullets, and I'm certainly happy to answer any questions. So, one of our first directives is to recommend the twenty-three, twenty-four budget needs that are linked directly to our schools and district goals. Justification of the building and system-wide budgets for twenty-three, twenty-four must be based on projected enrollments and curricular needs. So, we're always looking at our enrollment. We're always looking at what we need to support our students in improving and moving forward and achieving. For this coming year, all projected staff increases and/or newly recommended programs shall be offset by existing staff and programs, unless the anticipated appropriation goes beyond what is needed to fund collective bargaining agreements. We are moving into a teacher collective bargaining negotiation period, so that is coming into play, and that will affect greatly our budget. So, we have to consider that as well. We will certainly ask school and district administrators and their staff to identify essential services for their students. We will continue to support programs that sustain the physical, social, and emotional development of our children, especially considering the long-term effects that have been presented by the pandemic. We will certainly focus on professional development that supports and improves equity and access for all of our students in our schools and create stronger inclusivity in our diverse student body. We want to make sure we are tapping revenue streams outside of the operating budget, such as our federal and state grant opportunities. We have had a hit this year on our Title I budget. We have lost approximately seventy thousand dollars based on different formulas being used to calculate. Unfortunately, we have to offset that in our budget, so we're going to have to figure that out. We want to develop all of our budgets to reflect actual expenditures more closely in the last three years, and that, we will continue to monitor our line item transfers. We will budget utility expenses to reflect actual expenditures more closely in the last three years, and provide reports on usage, allowing for a better understanding of which users and programs are generating cost increases. It's been a rough year. We've seen fuel go up quite a bit, and we hope to see it come back down, but it is always a challenge. And being here on the island, we know that there is that factor as well. We will continue to monitor food services and the Nantucket Community School finances to reduce expenditures and to raise revenues in order to ensure that the programs do not run into a deficit. We will continue to, our budget development discussions with town officials, with the finance committee, and the select board through the Town Ad Hoc Budget Work Group. We will have dates for those in the coming days, and I will certainly share those with you when we have them. And finally, we will be proactive in promoting and support from our budget, for our budget, for, through the media, public forums, and other committee meetings. So, we certainly want to be as transparent as possible across the community so that everyone knows how we are using our budget appropriately. And happy to take questions.
Esmeralda?
No questions. No questions. Thank you.
I have a question. The windmill up there. You said utility expenses. What does that generate, and how is that dispensed or dispersed?
So, it's about twenty percent, help me, Martin, if I'm right, about twenty percent of our energy for the middle and high school is, comes from the turbine. So, that's what we use, and that offsets our prices for energy for that. So...
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Summer school presentation.
Yeah, why don't we move down so we can see? Is that all right?
Great, yep.
If I turn this light out, is it going to be too dark? Better?
Hi, good evening. Summer school was a really good time with the kids this summer. We saw a lot of smiles. We had a lot of great activities that we did with them. This is the enrollment that we had. The students were invited via invitations that they received to participate in the Title I and Title III programs, and I will let the ESY program and Title III programs talk more about their own. But for Title I, we extended invitations based on reading scores, math assessments, and teacher recommendations for how we decided who should be invited to participate in the program. Did you guys want to pop in and talk about your enrollment as we're talking about numbers?
I'm going to go.
Okay. So, this past summer, we were able to incorporate specials. So, students were able to get art, music, PE throughout the summer, which they thoroughly enjoyed. We also had a nurse on staff, which I believe is a requirement. So, students were able to participate in music, where they learned things like body percussion, creative movement. We went in and saw them sing songs. They just really thoroughly enjoyed it. It made it seem more like a real school day for them, which the continuity was really good in helping them to be prepared for this school year. Here's some more photos of them engaging in their music classes, and then art. The theme was under and over the sea. So, everything that they did this summer was related to the ocean. So, you can see the nautical theme throughout everything that they did with their artwork. They really took a lot of pride in the things that they were able to achieve. There was a lot of interdisciplinary collaboration between what they were learning in the classroom through their science that they were doing, along with their artwork. Very creative art projects. In physical education, the PE teacher who worked with them was very adaptive in working with the needs of all of the students. He took them out on the field. We had limited resources in terms of space, but he really did a great job with making do with what he did have available. Our Title I summer scholars, we focused on accelerating learning, incorporating local science, which again is the over and under the sea theme that we had. We provided intensive reading interventions, and we were able to engage pretty much all of the learners. Prior to the start of the school year, we had two days of professional development, and during those two days of professional development, there was really a lot of focus on the guided reading instruction, as well as on math instruction. And every week, we had professional learning communities, where we would review the reading assessments and the math assessments to determine if students needed to be moved up based on their progress. In kindergarten, we had Elizabeth Domi, Jessica Tool, who were teachers. First grade, we had Courtney Collins and Ashley Fialla. Some of the topics that they covered within their courses were ocean layers. They did this really cool thing with bottles, where they did sediments with gelatin. Unfortunately, I don't have pictures of that, but they were very resourceful in getting their materials. They got donations from Stop &amp; Shop, and just were very creative in the work that they did with the students. And then here are some of the kids with their projects, along with some of the reading groups and research that they did within the classroom. For grades three and four, they loved math. That's all I kept hearing about whenever I would pop into their classrooms. This past summer, they used a new program. It was hands-on. So, everything that they were learning, they had manipulatives to accompany what they were learning in class. And so, it was really a great program in terms of math. In fifth grade, the focus was on completing their summer reading, so that they could go into sixth grade, a new school year at CPS, prepared for their summer reading assignment. There was also small group reading, which we called the SWAT team. We had our reading literacy specialists, Allison Johnson and Kayla Klein, who just recently joined NIS this year as a fifth-grade teacher. We're thrilled to have her. They had two TAs that they worked with, and their reading idea was simple. Every kid read at their instructional level for at least forty-five minutes a day, and there were also small groups with one to two and one to four teacher-student ratios. Students were really able to get some intensive reading instruction, and they were able to advance. maintained. And then if you look at the progression chart, you can see the growth that students made throughout the summer. Most importantly, no students regressed. And I'm going to turn this over to the high school.
All right. So hi, everyone. My name is Chris Memeck. Sorry, some new faces in here. School counselor here at the high school, and was able to be the Title I summer school coordinator for the middle school. So what we did was we took an approach to project-based learning for grades six, seven, and eight, and it was great. We were able to do a couple collabs with some local organizations, you know, the N H A, and actually in a couple different ways we worked with them. We were able to do some projects over at the oldest house, as well as with Washington's tent, which is a traveling exhibit nationwide. It's Washington's war tent from the Revolutionary War. So students were able to go there, learn about it, help set it up. And then that also tied in too with another project that we did, which I'll talk about in a second. And then we also were able to partner up with the Whaling Museum, and then as well actually with Linda Loring. We made birdhouses as well, and we'll take a look at that. And those were taught by Ian Stewart and Paul Bukary for E L A and math. And then also Jackie Chaviria helped out as well, and then also Mike Gervin over in the woodshop was a huge help for us this summer. So one of the big projects that we did was we built birdhouses for Linda Loring. They were for eastern bluebirds, their nesting boxes, and we tied this in because a lot of the sixth, seventh, eighth grade math curriculum is fractions, decimals, things like that. So it was great to get the kids in the woodshop. They were able to measure out everything. They were able to cut it. Happy to report nobody got hurt in the woodshop for that age. But it was honestly like an amazing experience, especially with Gerv working with them. He was just like so good with each of the students. And it was great, too, when, you know, the students were able to see their finished projects, and we brought them over to Linda Loring, and it worked out really, really well. So the overall outcome went really, really well. There was maintenance or growth from all of our students and some really big progress as well from a handful of them, especially for reading. You know, we had students that were growing at over, you know, nine-plus months of growth. And the same thing too for math. We had students that they came in, we had an essence like a standard that students met with a first-time exam, and we administered at the end. And we had students that were showing a huge growth, you know, scoring forty percent higher, you know, for some of them thirty percent. So overall, like I said, it went really, really well. Another aspect to this summer as well was credit recovery and summer school for the high school students. So what we did this year was we took an approach similar to last year as well by using Apex, which is a virtual online learning platform, and they offer classes across the board, ranging from, you know, math, science, even electives, languages, a whole slew of classes. So we had pretty good turnout. We had fifty students that were invited to participate in Acceleration Academy and summer school. There is a differentiation between the two of them, just to note. Summer school was typically for students that scored anywhere between a fifty-five and a fifty-nine, and that was open, like I said, to just those students. On the other side of that is we do have this new program, which was started actually by Patty Alve at the, in the L program. And what this program is geared towards is Acceleration Academy. It's geared towards getting new arrivals back on track to graduating at an age-appropriate age. So for a lot of these students, they may have qualified because, you know, even with their F outside of that summer school, but there were a lot of students that technically qualify for both. But overall, we had fifty students that were invited. Forty-five of them ended up taking classes. We had a big rush for the last week of school, identifying students, getting them signed up, having them come in for meetings, talking about the platform, and it went pretty well. Overall, twenty-seven of those students were able to complete classes. There were eighty-three courses in total that were attempted, and forty-nine of them were completed, which is honestly pretty good. We had a lot of students as well that were able to complete a fair number of classes, three, four classes, and do really well in them, you know, students that were scoring, you know, seventies, eighties, nineties in some of these classes. So it was really impressive to see the students come together. Communication was also key for our summer program with this. Big shout-outs to Maria Rubina, Eileen Tavares, Patty as well. We were reaching out to these kids weekly, checking in on them, checking with their parents as well, giving them updates on grades, you know, and their academic standing. And I think that had a big impact on students following through, working on their courses, you know, and ultimately leading to, you know, that number as well. I'll turn this over to you guys. Where's this? Okay, so this is us. So this is just feedback from teachers. Like I said, we do a poll at the end of the year and did like some of the things that students or teachers were able to follow up on. Okay. And then, Shar, you want to go on it?
Well, this is all.
Yeah?
Yeah, sure.
Tag team is?
So just going back to the previous slide that Chris just had up here, this is actually a survey that we did with both parents and teachers, and so these are some of the comments that we got from the teachers. They really thought that they really liked the reading groups, they loved the kids, but of course. And they also liked the collaboration that they had with their coworkers through the P L Cs, so that really was a success for them to be able to continue on with that in the summertime. I loved the comments that the parents and the students made, which is on the right side of the screen. So those are just a couple of the comments. We asked parents to complete a survey, and I think that the feedback that we get from the parents and the students is really the most important and speaks directly to the success of the summer school program. And then what we learned for next year is that we should definitely maintain the dedicated literacy time because it really has a tremendous impact on the success of how students are going to do with their reading. The hands-on math curriculum, we actually had teachers come back at the start of this school year and at the end of summer school and ask to hold on to their math materials that they used over the summer because the manipulatives were just so powerful in meeting the needs of the students. Specials were hugely popular. We also had a lot of field trips, which I'm sorry I failed to mention earlier, a lot of trips to the Whaling Museum, some of the trips that Chris mentioned.
Ryan Mitchell.
Ryan Mitchell. Marie, Maria Mitchell, Ryan Mitchell? Okay, so, you know, kids were really able to go. There was also a trip out to Jetty's Beach. So I'm sorry, I'm not remembering all this off the top of my head, but there were a lot of field trips which I think were very meaningful to the students because they were able to relate what they were learning in the classroom to things in real life. Healthy snacks. Students received snacks each day. They received two pieces of fruit and two other snacks like goldfish, pretzels, things that were healthy. We discovered they do not like carrots, they do not like raisins. Those came back every single time. But overall, it really was a wonderful program. The small class sizes were great. Some surprises that we had were we had students that showed up for summer school that we had invited, but they'd never enrolled, but they showed up anyway, and of course, we gladly enrolled them. So initially, we thought our numbers were going to be small, and the program really blossomed and grew. I think, and this may not be up here, but I think one of the things that we need to consider going into next year, and I understand that our funding was cut, but I think that if we open it up to even siblings who may not necessarily need summer school, it makes it easier for parents if all of their kids are in one place. So, you know, I'm hoping maybe we can find a creative way to make that happen. I think our numbers would definitely come up if we were to think creatively in terms of doing something like that. And extended school year.
Okay. And to jump off, it was a great year, a great summer. The kids had a blast. On my last slide, you'll see one of the kids asked me for no heat waves. I will talk to Mother Nature about that, but I'm not sure if I could. She's taken us through a really hot summer. And back to our staffing, we had thirteen E S Y teachers. That included inclusion and our I D S C classrooms. We had fifteen TAs, which was great. We needed the support. We had therapists, our speech, we had an O T. Most of our O T was online if the parents agreed to doing that. And our reading specialist as well was online remotely. And we had our social workers, and I had two subs and a B C B I. So our goal of E S Y is to prevent regression in the previous year's instruction and to maintain current I E P goals. So we really focus on just maintaining what is on their I E Ps and to give them the services that they qualify for in summer. And with that, our therapies, we have speech, O T, P T, like I had mentioned. We have the specialized reading, social work, small groups with targeted instruction. That was happening in the I D S C room, and also our students that were included into the Title I program, they were supported by an inclusion teacher. Reading and writing and math, of course. Life skills and executive functioning with our higher-level I D S C programs. And enrichment, this was a huge success with a lot of our teachers. The adaptive art, music, and activities in the garden, that was the biggest comeback from the teachers, that they really enjoyed those activities as well as our math program as well. So this is the fun part. These are all of our pitchers, working hard in the classroom. This one student, he was in the inclusion classroom, and he was very proud of his work on his ocean story. And this is our adaptive specials at the garden. And of course, we did a lot of, they were able to go on a lot of field trips with N H A and Mariah Mitchell. And continuing with that. And of course, all the fun moments and the smiles. So looking on to next year, like we talked about in the past, the math program was a big success. One of our I D S C teachers really loved it, and she was one of the ones that wanted to keep the program. Field trips also was, they were able to get out in the community, and I think that's really important, given that opportunity in the summer is essential. Adaptive specials, which is something we really, really liked, and again, worked with the students in the classrooms. And our students request, again, no carrots and no heat waves. So hopefully, we can make that happen. Thank you. On to Taylor.
My name is Taylor Murphy. I am during the year a kindergarten teacher, but this year was my first year as the Title III coordinator. Title III just means students who are learning English. So we were parallel to Title I N E S Y, but we did a lot of things similarly and a lot of things differently. So we had a couple of goals for our particular program. We wanted our students to continue learning and practicing English. We had a heavy focus in science, and we did all of our math, or all of our E L A and writing around that science. And we also adopted the new math program that the other programs used. So these were the teachers that we had this summer. Most of the teachers we had in our program are in district year-round, and then a couple of the teachers were returning. So they either previously worked in the district and were returning for the summer or just come every summer for a summer program. There were seventy-six Title III students, and we had very high attendance. It was back another side, but we, it was very well-attended. They were happy to be there, and we had, we were happy to have so many students. So again, the main goal was to continue their learning and to continue their English. So students were doing science every day. They have units written by in-district employees. Kindergarten and first grade focus on force and motion, so pushes and pulls. Second and third focus on stages of matter and water, stages of water particularly. And then fourth through sixth grade focus on biomimicry, which is learning from animals and using those skills that animals have to create inventions for humans to use. So they were doing those science units. They were writing every day. They were reading every day about those science skills. They had math every day, and then again, specials. We were really appreciative of the field trips this year. This was new for us. Miranda Dale was at the N H A. She was one of our contacts there, and just to get these kids out into the community to a place that they might not visit, a lot of the kids, because of COVID, they go during the school year, but they hadn't gotten to go to these places. So this was the first time they got to go to the Whaling Museum, or the first time they got to go to the windmill that they just drive by all the time. So it was really neat for them to go and learn about their community and, and again, practicing their language. Joelle Gurley was a connection to Mariah Mitchell. She really pushed for every grade level in all three programs to have a trip at some point during the summer, and she was linking, she was asking us what we were learning about, so we really made those connections to what we were learning in summer school to these field trips. So this is a video that I wanted to share, and it is one of our newcomers who was in third grade, and this was during art class.
Hello. Mi nombre es Sebastian. Soy española en inglés. Este es el pulpo. Lo llamo Pulpacho. Este pulpo. This is, it's a name, Pulpacho. It's a really good white, blue, and black. Azul oscuro y azul claro. Estas son las fusiones. Esto es de los putitos. Yo creo for this, this minute, for this, it's a little blue. Good.
So we really embraced their both languages, and this was just one example of, I happened to be subbing this day, and I popped into art, and he was just telling us all about the octopuses that they were making, and it connected to their science, and it was just, it's really good to see him using both languages. So again, we ask the students what they, what they took away from the program and also some things from teachers. So a fifth grader feels like he learned something. This was from a teacher, that it's important to their learning and their future depends on these students. This teacher was just saying that summer school was fun. Really, this teacher really thought that specials were very important, the field trips were really important, that summer school became fun this year, and that it felt And again, students were engaged in learning every day. So a couple of successes. We had great enrollment, great attendance. They had fun. They loved coming to school. Each student grew in areas of oracy and literacy. Teachers participated in a weekly P L C to improve their strategies for teaching English learners. Classroom size for us was a really big positive. Most classrooms were around twelve students and one teacher. We did not have any TAs for our program. One of the classrooms was a bigger one, maybe around sixteen, but most of them are small under ten, which is very important. The snacks were really, really great this year. They got four snacks a day. They took them home if they didn't eat them, and that was a huge, shout it to Linda because she was really helpful with supporting us with that, and the new math program that Mandy found. Looking forward to next year, something that is an ongoing problem was the buses, but we had the idea that there are a lot of students who want to come to summer school, particularly the younger ones, that want to come to summer school but didn't qualify for the bus. And we were thinking about maybe next year, trying to think creatively about having some sort of walking route where they could jump on a trail and get to school without depending on the bus, who might not be able to walk by themselves. Field trips and specials were an overall favorite. We really want to continue that next year. And then just thinking about how we keep the kids comfortable. And that, that's it. Any questions?
Can we make a request that we go back to the? Thank you.
Pauline, any questions?
I don't. I just think it's wonderful, all of the effort and time you put into the summer programs. It sounds like it was really a lot of fun for all of the students. And I hear your plea for air-conditioned areas of the school. I can't imagine how uncomfortable that was for everybody. But thank you, and thank you to your whole team for making it fun, because it should be fun.
Rocky?
I have one question. When you said that, where did your data start with? You said they had fifty percent increased reading, and then fifty percent, where does that origination point, the data for that? Where does that come from?
It started with where they entered the program, so there were reading assessments done at the end of the school year, so that was our baseline.
Now, will you follow up with the schools after that, on where, how the kids are, so they weren't fifty percent? Will you follow through on that?
Me personally?
Well?
No, I'm going back to S E L, but that's variable. I'm sure we'll put up the.
um, particularly the younger ones that want to come to summer school but didn't qualify for the bus. And we were thinking about maybe next year, trying to think creatively about having some sort of walking route where they could jump on a trail and get to school without depending on the bus, who might not be able to walk by themselves. Um, field trips and specials were an overall favorite. We really want to continue that next year. And then just thinking about, um, how we keep the kids comfortable. And that, that's it. Any questions? Thank you.
Pauline, any questions?
I don't. Um, I, I just think it's wonderful, all of the effort and time you put into the summer programs. It sounds like it was really a lot of fun for all of the students. Um, and I hear your plea for air-conditioned areas of the school. I can't imagine how, how uncomfortable that was for everybody. But thank you and thank you to your whole team for making it fun because it should be fun.
Rocky.
I have one question. When you said that, um, where did your data start with? You said they had fifty percent increased reading and then fifty percent. Where does that origination point, the data for that, where does that come from?
It started with where they entered the program. So there were reading assessments run at the end of the school year. So that was our baseline.
Now, will you follow up with the, um, schools after that and where, how, how the kids are, so they weren't fifty percent. Do you follow through on that?
Me personally?
Well.
No, I'm going back to S E L, but that's for Rabel. Sher will, uh, will, will be following. She shared this, um, all that data with her, um, with the nurses and the guidance, um, around the middle school. And so those, that gave to our teachers and, um, started.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Marilyn?
Uh, no questions, just a wonderful job. The summer school should be fun.
Uh?
I, uh, I just want to commend you on the field trips. I think it's so important for the kids to get out and to see the resources that we have. And then they probably will go back with their families. I'm curious about the Washington's tent. I've never heard of that. What is that?
Yeah, it's just a traveling exhibit. Um, it's, it's not his actual tent. It's, it's a replica. Um, I think the actual is in the Smithsonian. Um, but, uh, yeah, it's just a traveling exhibit. And it's not just necessarily all about Washington. They talk about like his day-to-day duties when he was on the battlefield. Um, but they also just talk about like living during that time, you know, kind of what did that entail? Uh, the kids really liked it. They went over, they literally helped him set it up. Um, they were, and it kind of, it was kind of cool. It tied into with what they were doing. So like the artifacts for the reading and the writing, it shows artifacts there. And then part of the project, there was a whole summer was to write like a description of these artifacts. Um, but yeah, overall, it's just like the coolest experience.
So great, so great. Yeah, that's, so was it an exhibit like installed at the N H A?
No, it was literally an outdoor exhibit by the wooden house.
Wow.
It was pretty cool.
That's great. No, it sounds, I taught summer school many moons ago and it was not fun. For me or the children. So what you are doing is, uh, is, it's wonderful to hear the curriculum and, I shouldn't say that, I think so.
There weren't kids wanting to come to summer school back then, were there? Natalie?
No questions. I had a couple of friends that, um, I think they were TAs and they really enjoyed it, so.
If I may. I, I want to just to add, um, our department in special services contracts year round with outside providers because of the lack of staff that we have. I wanted to mention, um, when Kara was talking about the therapist, the Boston Ability Center, which is out of N A D, um, actually reached out to us and could they offer pro bono, um, services? Yes, was the answer to that.
Wow.
Um, and although we were charged for some of it, um, the woman, Jan, who runs the center, she's a physical therapist, her husband's a physical therapist. And she said that, um, she was going to be vacation on the island and could she provide services during E S Y? And again, the answer was yes. And so for the first time in ten years, we had in-person physical therapy.
That's incredible.
Which was hugely important for our kids because if you're talking about regression, those kids need it the most. And she actually continued to service kids after E S Y was over. Um, so, uh, we had three online, um, occupational therapists, which we've never had that many. So it's not that we were able to necessarily meet all of the service needs, but we were in far better shape. So I just wanted to make sure that that was recognized because we, we don't usually get offers like that. So.
Uh, if I may, I, that just triggered another question. Who handled the executive functioning? Would it be those same providers? How was that addressed?
Depending on their I E P goals, yes, but that's really something that we're trying to embed across all curricula at this point because we all have a level of executive functioning need. It's not just, typically it gets diagnosed through special ed services, but everyone has executive functioning need. And so we, we try to embed that more and more. Um, typically, kids on I E Ps have specific roles on it. But they, um, we, we were incorporating it more and more in our classes.
That's great. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Committee discussions and votes to be taken. We'll start off with the September sixth meeting minutes.
So moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 A vote to approve the donation of fleece jackets and pants from the Joseph L., Joseph L. Viera Fund for the football team in the amount of three thousand nine hundred and seventy-five dollars.
So moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Transfers and invoices?
So moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And hanging banners in Vito Capizzo Stadium.
If, if I may, just to, just to, to, to give some background with this. Um, our, um, boosters club, along with our, um, our football, uh, team, has been doing some fundraising. And, um, based on our policy, K H B, we, they are required to have us approve the ability for these banners to be displayed in the stadium. So we wanted to make sure that we brought that to you. I do not have a mock-up of the banners, but I do know that they are, um, that they've been generated and they look good. So, great.
Can I just ask a question? Does that have to go to the sign committee?
To the sign committee? That's a good question. I'm not sure. I can look at, look, find, find that out. No, that's okay. It's worth asking.
May, may I, through the chair, is it on private, is it on school property?
School property.
No, it does not.
So, perfect. Look at that. Thank you very much.
Like that answer.
The Civic League was right.
Thank you very much for that.
Motion's been made, seconded.
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
Subcommittee work group report. Is anybody meeting?
We, that's.
You had a meeting.
So I, yeah, I unfortunately had a work conflict, so I was not able to attend the Cape Cod Collaborative. But we had, um, Pauline and Martin and I attended a, a meeting to discuss, I mean, I, I don't, I, sort of a steering committee. I mean, we were, we didn't vote, we didn't talk about, um, um, you know, initiatives in place, but we shared a, out about a lot of ideas. It was valuable and we need to follow up. And, and we're looking at, uh, the model that Martha's Vineyard has. This is for suit, for food service. For food services, yeah, I'm sorry. And so we are looking to take a field trip over there to see what they're doing. They've invited us over. So I, it was, it was fruitful, I suppose. No pun intended. But it was good, no, it was good. And it was, uh, it felt, you know, that there are farms that are interested. So it was nice to open the conversation.
Anyone else?
If, if I may, um, we have, um, as I shared with the, um, negotiation subcommittee, we will be starting teacher negotiations and that will be on October sixth. And I, if I may take this time for just a quick moment, um, I had a, um, bargaining, um, a union bargaining meeting with town today with all of those, um, who were, who are going to be involved with, um, bargaining units this year. And, um, they would like to hold a joint executive session with school committee, select board, water commissioner and, uh, water commission and other, um, boards that are involved. Um, coming up very quickly just to have a, um, a kind of a more unified, uh, understanding of the process and, and where the town is headed. So, um, I have three dates that I have been asked to provide to you. This would be an executive session on Zoom. There's a need for a quorum for each of the bodies. So we would need to have at least three members able to be present. The first date is on, um, October sixth at four thirty P M.
That's our date.
It is our date. I may be able to, if we're able to move it up a little bit earlier to three thirty, um, for our meeting with the, um, with the N T A, um, we may be able to make that meeting. So I just wanted to share that with you. I, it, our first meeting is usually procedural, procedural, so it doesn't take more than about an hour at the max. Um, the next date would be, actually, I swapped the dates, sorry. Um, the fourth of October, which is, um, next, or it's Tuesday in two weeks at four thirty P M. So that's prior to the school committee meeting. Um, so it is a Zoom meeting, which means, um, I just have to find a spot to be able to, to, um, connect. And the last one is the seventeenth of October at five P M. So I just need to know what your.
For all of us?
Yes.
Not just those who are in negotiations?
No, it's all.
Okay.
What's the seventeenth?
I have no, um, conflicts with any, aside from the sixth. So if you're able to move that, make that adjustment. I'm fine with that. Okay. The seventeenth, I'm not sure. I'll have to look.
I'm flexible.
I think it's, I think it's a Monday. The seventeenth, I believe, is a Monday.
What, I want the sixth one?
The sixth was at four thirty. This is great. I will let them know. Thank you. And we'll let you know which date is feasible for everybody.
Now, they have to all, all, so fifty other people have to approve the date too?
As many as possible, as long as there's a quorum for each, each body. So, thank you.
Natalie, any student reports?
Um, not a whole lot going on. We had a busy weekend with athletics, our first home football game, which was really exciting. Um, and then we do have a clubs fair that's being planned right now, which will happen before the end of the month. Um, so students will be able to get more involved with that. Um, some things are starting up here and there. I know the Accidentals and Naturals singing group is starting up this week. Um, and then homecoming is set to start Monday, October seventeenth, um, with our, um, spirit week and then our hallway decorating, float decorating and parade with Saturday, the twenty-second, being the day with the, all the games and the parade. Um, and then also seniors have started to plan December Delight, our, um, our annual fundraiser for the seniors, which is on December tenth this year. So.
Do you know who we're playing on that day?
I do not.
Falmouth?
Falmouth.
If I may, Natalie, have, has the, um, either the musical or the drama club production been decided?
So not really sure what's happening with the drama club this year.
So if I may, through the chair, um, so there, there is some information, um, it's not confirmed. So we're not ready to share any of that information just yet. I know that, um, Ms. McEver's been working on the musical and, uh, drama club, people just came to me today. So we will be taking a look at the script for that. So.
Oh, great.
We'll be on target, but we're not ready to share that information.
I understand. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Agenda for the next workshop meeting?
So we will be meeting in workshop. Um, the plan is to meet in the, um, N H S conference room. And, uh, we will look at our school committee goals, which, um, we did share and begin to look at at our last workshop, but we're going to really workshop it, so to speak, uh, and, and come up with what areas we'd like to focus on. Um, and then I will propose, I will share my proposed superintendent goals for the year. Um, I think if, if, uh, if we feel comfortable with this, I will invite Paul Hilton from Cape Cod Collaborative to join us, maybe at the beginning of the meeting so that he is able to catch the last boat out and then we can work on our goals after that.
Perfect.
So, great, great.
Sounds great.
Yeah. May I ask, what time is the workshop?
Six P M.
Wait, you just said where it is and I.
It's at the high school conference room.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Anything else from anybody?
No.
No, sir.
Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's like ready to sing. Meeting's next Wednesday.
Community service.